Good evening, everybody. Welcome. Today is January 10, 2023. This is the town council meeting for the town of Lake Clark Shores. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Paul Shawhoop.
President.
Vice Mayor Robert Shawhoop.
Here.
President Pro Tem Gregory Freebold.
Here.
Councilmember Valtein Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Robert Gonzalez.
Here.
Thank you, Mary. We can all rise for a moment of silence. This is for Clara Boo Hacker, died at 95 years old. She was my grandmother. May her memory be eternal. Pastor, would you be so kind as to lead us in a vocation and pledge of allegiance?
Our Father in Heaven, we come here tonight, and I want to thank you for the privilege and the honor to be able to stand here and pray. I thank you that I pray to a God that hears prayers. I thank you, Lord, even our nation knows that. Lord, as we saw the football player, his heart stopped. He's alive and lives today's home because God heard prayer and God intervened. Lord, I would pray tonight that you would intervene in this meeting tonight. We ask for that. Lord, we ask that you would lead and guide and direct these men. May your will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Lord, again, I thank you for these men, these ladies. I just thank you for them. Lord, I pray tonight that you would just give them a continued heart, Lord, for this community. Lord, they love this community. They do their best to make it better and better every month, every year. I thank you for that. Lord, may you give them a continued camaraderie, Lord, as I see them work together as a team. It's beautiful, and I thank you for that. I pray, Lord, you can give them a continued sweet spirit as they deal with people and people with different opinions. And, Lord, may everything tonight be settled in peace. I pray for that. Again, I thank you for these men and women, Lord, as I think about their lives, and they've worked hard all day, and they're back tonight. And it's like someone said, "The work of God is done by tired people." So God bless them tonight. Thank you for them. I pray for the Bears family and all those in the community that lost that friend and loved one, Lord, that changed his life when he loses Grandma and Grandpa. And I just pray you give them sweet grace tonight to get through this. I pray, Lord, that you'd bless our community. I pray, Lord, that you'd bless the chief and all his officers, Lord. And we do thank you for them tonight, and I pray you keep them safe. Thank you for their jobs and the danger they go through, and they do it for us. And I thank you, people, for those people that live for others. God bless them tonight. Bless America. Thank you for the privilege to live in this place. America, thank you, Lord. We get to reduce it all the way down to living in the Lake Clark Shore areas. We thank you for that. It's all by the grace of God. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you for all that you did. Thank you for the cross. Thank you for your love. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you, Pastor. That was beautiful, as always. I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
Some more.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Some more.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, no presentations. As far as I do proceedings, public hearings brings us to unfinished business. This would be the first reading of ordinance 2023-01, extending the temporary moratorium imposed by ordinance 2022-01 on enforcement of section 125, 767, sub A, sub B, and sub D, and for additional period of six months. Before we go ahead and read that, Mary, I just want to give some background on this. So this went into effect about six months ago in order for us to figure out a way to deal with the code and whether it's going to be enforced as is and what that impact would be on the residents or if changes to the code need to be made. So we held a workshop. It was a very productive workshop, well attended, went on for a couple of hours. I don't remember exactly how long, maybe even three. But during that, we heard from a wide variety of residents regarding a wide variety of issues. And it's pretty clear that no matter what decision is made on this, it's going to impact a large number of residents, not just those who already received a violation or those who complaints have been made about. It's going to impact a pretty significant number of residents. So earlier between that workshop and this, the council discussed holding another workshop in order for us to hear more from the residents and better understand what can be done and what needs to be done. This one now with some perspective, knowing what other residents had as far as issues were concerned, and then trying to see, you know, where's our happy medium? What's in the best interest as far as enforcing the current code or making some changes to make the code more enforceable and certainly more easy for the residents to comply with? So that is why we are here. You're going to hear the first reading, and then for all those who want to come up and talk about the ordinance, please do so. Mary?
An ordinance of the town council of the town of Lake Clark Shores, Florida, extending the temporary moratorium imposed by ordinance 2022-01 on enforcement of section 125-767 A, B, and D for an additional period of six months, providing for a conflicts clause, separability clause, and an effective date and for other purposes.
Thank you very much, Mary. All right, we'll open the floor up to audience comments. If anyone here present in the audience would like to come up and talk about this moratorium. While we wait for that, anyone online?
No, sir.
No one in?
Can I ask the town administrators some questions?
Yes.
Dan, why is it six months? Why can't we have a shorter period of time so we don't lose sight and lose focus of what we're trying to accomplish? Because I'm afraid we keep on kicking the can down the road. There's no urgency. And I've received an email from Doreen Harling, and I wanted to acknowledge it. And some other neighbors have picked up the phone and called me. And their concern was, one neighbor took a ride around the city and found that there were over 150 violations. So if we do something, is this not going to, one way or the other, is it not going to create a flood of work on the code enforcement department of the police department?
Mr. Vice Mayor, I think you asked about five questions in that.
You can check any one. I wanted to get it all out.
I think in terms of the six-month period, that's certainly up to council. Staff is looking at six months because we need to have a, another workshop. Timing-wise, with everything that's going on, that workshop realistically probably can't happen until the first week in March at the earliest. So you can make it for four months. You could leave it at six months. We'll work as fast as we possibly can. Once we know where we're headed. The importance of the workshop is, I believe, we heard some really good ideas at the last one, but we need to flush those out a little bit and put some meat around them. We'd like the public to do that in the workshop, and we want to make sure that we have time to respond to what's said after the workshop.
Okay. Would there be a way to hold the workshop in February as originally thought about or no?
We have a meeting on the seventh, and we have a meeting on the 28th. So if we could find a date, it doesn't have to be a Tuesday. So if we can find a date in between those, certainly, we can do it whenever you want us to.
I would like to find it. I would like to have the workshop in February, if the council's on board with that, if we can make it work. Otherwise, in the earliest we can in March. But so basically, let's say we hold it in February. It goes our way. We hold it in February. That's one month from now. Then there's going to be proposed action at the next council meeting, right? So either Charlie comes up with another proposed ordinance or during that February, that March meeting, the council would then decide if they want to enforce the code as is or task Charlie with revisions.
So remembering that the March meeting had to be put into the end of February, so February 28th.
But that is the March meeting.
Is the March meeting.
Because of the Palm Beach County days.
And we'll need some time. I don't, just for grins, I think it's going to take more than a week. So if the workshop didn't happen until the third week in February, only giving us a week to prepare everything and get it circulated and get comments before we actually want to take action and make sure it's a document we're comfortable with is a little tight. But if that's what you choose, you want us to do, that's what they make nights and weekends for.
Would the earliest time be like in March? If it did come down to March, like the third week of March? I know we have a lot going on the first couple of weeks. Busy February.
Again, I'd like to, if we're going to do March, I'd like to do early March because we have the barbecue at the end of March.
I have a lot of stuff going on early March. We're working up here.
And then, I'm just thinking logistically, right? I understand the vice mayor's point, and then some residents have reached out to me, the same concern. But ultimately, there's logistics to this. In my, I want to talk about it. After the next workshop, the council's going to have to make a decision. So we can fast forward and ask Charlie to prepare a revised thing off of the workshop, but the council hasn't decided whether or not they just want to leave it as is or make a change. So I don't know if that would be premature. So then at the next meeting, following the workshop, we could have proposals from Charlie based on what he learned. But the council will have yet to have had an opportunity to discuss the issues and make a decision yet. So Charlie's either going to be doing work that doesn't need to be done yet most possibly, or work that could be better well, better directed if the council has the chance to meet and discuss it in the open forum of the council meeting. So that's at least one month from whenever this is going to be. And then after that, within a month, we could have a proposed ordinance. And if the council agrees with it, it could go to first reading that month. But then it has to go to second reading. So that's four months right there.
Yeah. And remember, even though you're looking at six months, you've got two months where you have to advertise the new ordinance, assuming there is a new ordinance. So now you've really reduced your time to have a finished document in place to four months because you need those last two months to adopt it.
For the first and second reading after each meeting?
Correct.
So, because there has been some very upset phone calls received over stuff that's beyond control, but without going into specifics, it doesn't mean that there's a moratorium that there's still not code enforcement going on, correct?
You've evaded enforcement.
Well, I understand. But there's just other issues that exist out there just besides that regarding vehicles, a variety of different things that, you know, are being brought to at least my attention. I don't know about the other council members.
This moratorium is only for these three paragraphs in the document. So everything, the moratorium that's being proposed to be extended is only for three paragraphs in the code. The rest of the code is still being enforced.
Okay.
So Charlie, do you have a recommendation? Is it actually feasible to do it, to have the moratorium in a shorter period of time than six months?
It is doable. My recommendation is we shoot for a shorter period of time to have the new ordinance, assuming there's going to be a new ordinance. Put this in place for six months. If we adopt a new ordinance, we can repeal the moratorium as we adopt that new ordinance.
That's what I was thinking.
I just don't want to lose, I don't want to kick the can down the road. I agree completely. Maybe we keep on keeping it on the agenda every month. That'll keep.
Well, I think it will be, given the fact that we're trying to have.
A workshop.
The workshop.
Yeah. And I do have a draft, which I will make available to all of you tomorrow. And your individual input, don't send it in a group email, but your individual input is very welcome, and I can adjust it before we have our next meeting based on your input.
I think that that would be the best way. And I'm kind of frustrated because, you know, on one hand, we want to get it right. And I think that we all see logistically how difficult that is, not only just in coordinating in the readings, but also getting something right and rushing to create a new ordinance under the gun. I don't think benefits anybody. I think that we're going to be right back where we started with the current ordinance. One of the things that, and I spoke to Dan about this a bit, one of the themes I think that came out that was really beneficial in the workshop was this idea that maybe it's a possibility that we need to break down, or at least when we do discuss, to talk about categories. Because sometimes we were talking about all this as an amalgamation altogether, all at once. But spend a little bit of time just solely talking about, for example, you know, the inclusion of commercial vehicles or just cargo trailers and just boats. So we can get a real clear picture of how we want to draft specifically with specificity in terms of each category, what we'd like to see and what we wouldn't like to see. So that that ordinance is really reflective of something that I think that we're all happy with.
And I think in this next workshop, Dan's going to make sure we have some photos of exemplars throughout the community of what would be a violation of the current code and what wouldn't be in violation if we made this tweak and what would be in violation, obviously. So the residents can appreciate what's around town versus, you know, just a couple of people coming up and talking about what they've seen.
And a good example of that is the commercial vehicle, because the current code says that one commercial vehicle less than one ton is allowed. If we change it to one ton or less, it eliminates 90% of the problems dealing with commercial vehicles.
Charlie, if I may, you touch on an important point because, for example, I know somebody who will remain nameless, it just so happens that their truck is a one-ton truck. As the definition, you know, it is commercial in nature, but it looks like a private vehicle. It's not white. It's painted a beautiful color. It's not modified in any way. And the most important thing is that there's no lettering. I think that if you have lettering and it's a commercial and it's over one ton, that now changes the classification. But if you're driving around in a one-ton truck because you have a heavy cargo trailer or you have a heavy boat, and there's no lettering and you're not using it for a commercial purpose, that's different.
Why can't we carve out these sections if we just, it's the one-ton aspect of the code, part of that which is in the moratorium? Yes. So if we just eliminate that and just, you know, make a motion to make it one ton and less, now that's one less item on our plate. Yes. It can be done as simply as that, correct? Absolutely. For discussion purposes, we don't want to start adopting multiple ordinances dealing with each one. It's much easier to have one ordinance that is inclusive of all of them. But we can deal with each one separately and individually.
And I think one of the things that staff wants to do after council has given us direction on where we're going, we want to be able to have the opportunity to come back and say, "This is what we heard. This is how this is written. And this is how it's going to look in the community." And make sure that there's that feedback opportunity for, "Wait, that's not what we thought we were saying." There may be a better way to address that.
Okay.
So we're trying to resolve a bad situation, and I really want us to do it in a methodical way so that we don't create a new bad situation or a different bad situation.
For sure.
Thank you.
All right. Any further comments? All right, let's take a motion.
Some more.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, our ongoing accepted sewer discussion. As I said at the last meeting, main thing we need to focus on here, and our big focus for 2023 is getting other people's money on a significant level. We're talking millions of dollars here. From last meeting to this meeting, we have not procured millions of dollars yet. So the Septus Sewer Conversion Project remains in a state where it cannot go forward because we don't have funding. Even though we did, I think, last meeting, I advised, we got approval on the state revolving fund loan money, which is great. But that doesn't address the lessening the burden significantly on the residents because we need other people's money to offset those costs and offset those costs by a large amount. So that's our focus and our goal. We're still moving forward with finishing to submit for permitting so that every phase can be essentially shovel-ready when we continue to go along the route of applying for money. And I know our incoming manager, Mr. Labello, is eager to start working. He's already been helping Dan out on ways for us to get additional funds to make this project viable for our town and our residents. Anything else anybody wants to add on that?
No, I think you did a great job. Even though I wasn't here last meeting, I went ahead and I looked at the video, and I think that your discussion was very encompassing. So thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
I just wanted to, I got some questions from people in Wellesley. And my understanding is Wellesley has their own sewer system.
Yep.
So all these people, someone was posting important notices about tonight's meeting to people in Wellesley, and I kept getting calls. And I'm like, well.
Yes, people were posting notice. There was a notice posted to a bunch of persons in Wellesley about coming to tonight's meeting. And then I was talking to the persons, and I told them, "I don't know how a sewer system here would affect anybody in Wellesley for any way." And anyway.
I can't imagine. I'm not an engineer, but.
So, okay, that's fine. I just, I think we just need to let the people there know that because somebody's spreading as if it were going to affect them, and it's not. Okay, thanks. That's all I had.
No problem. I'm glad they reached out to you as part of that whole misinformation situation.
Well, yeah, that's the thing. I mean, they're saying, you know, a bunch of people, they're asking questions. And I said, "You have your own sewer system." So, you know, this is how bad news starts.
Sure. All right, we're going to move on to new business. This is approval of an agreement with LMK Pipe Renewal LLC, the responsive and responsible low bidder, and the amount of $981,000, $981,100, and giving the mayor authorization to execute the agreement, subject to notice that additional CBDG funds will be available. Dan, can you comment on that for us, please?
I would love to. We have lined almost all of the old sewer system in Seminole Manor. This is the last 7,200 feet that hasn't been lined. If you remember, back in '12 and '13 and some of '14, we got about $900,000 from Palm Beach County CDBG monies to line that system. This is completing that work. We had estimated the cost at $300,000. We got more CDBG money to the tune of $224,882. The bids came in, low bid is $981,100. We went, after a lot of discussion internally, we went back to the county and suggested to the county that we should rebid the project. That delays the project. The money that we have is dependent on there being no delay. So they came back to us and said, "We appreciate the position that you're in. How about if we give you more money? What can you do?" So we wrote them a letter saying, "We would love for them to give us more money. We would appreciate it very much." It allows us to stay on schedule, provided that we conditionally approve the agreement with LMK tonight, and the county gets back to us with their intention by January 31st. We have to issue a notice of award to the contractor on January 31st to meet the deadline. So this is all being driven by an agreement with Palm Beach County that puts those two dates out there for us to meet as milestones. So that's what I'm asking tonight is if the council will provide authorization for the mayor to sign the agreement once we know how much money we're getting out of Palm Beach County. To put it in perspective, we've asked them for $512,118. That puts the total amount that Palm, that's an additional $512,000. That puts the total amount coming from Palm Beach County at $737,000 for this project. That would be absolutely spectacular. It would be nice to finish this lining project down there in Seminole Manor and be done with this.
And that would be a cost of the town of over 200.
Yeah, our contribution to that $981,000 would be $244,000.
Thank you, Dan.
By the way, just to make this more entertaining, today at 2:00, we did receive a bid protest from Interland Group, the loser, if you will. The engineers evaluated it. Joe and I evaluated it. We decided to deny the protest. We have written them a formal letter denying the protest. I have the authorization under the contract documents to do that. So we're moving forward.
Any questions for Mr. Clark on this topic?
Yes. Mr. Clark, thank you so much. And we had a brief conversation about this and kind of brought me up to speed. My concern is, you know, we're asking Palm Beach County, and it's very wonderful that they're kicking in some money that's guaranteed. My understanding is, is that that money that's guaranteed is if we continue on the same path and the deadlines that we're currently on. The additional monies that we're asking for, the $512,000 that we're asking, we've asked. They haven't promised, but we do need to make a decision with the contract. So it's my suggestion that if we were to move forward with the contract, it would be moving forward with the contract, but there's a condition subsequent. What means a condition subsequent is, yes, we'll sign the contract, but there's something else that needs to happen afterwards in order for our signing of the contract to be valid. What I don't want Lake Clark Shores to get into is getting backed into a corner to say, "Hey, we were asking for this half a million dollars from Palm Beach County. We signed the contract, but lo and behold, we're not getting the money from Palm Beach County." By adding in a condition subsequent, we're protecting ourselves by saying, "We're going to go through with the contract only if Palm Beach County kicks in X amount." And we may be able to give a range, you know, that this contract is only valid if we get at minimum of, and we can put a number to it, $300,000 or more. So that's just my two cents.
Not to exceed?
Well, it's not to exceed our original ask of 512, but we can put a floor to it to say, "Look, if they give us less than X, you know, we want to be able to have the opportunity to reconsider."
Is that not already in there, Dan?
Well, I wanted to add some clarification to what Councilman Gonzalez said. The way we've suggested the language is, we don't want to sign the contract at all. We want to wait until we have money in hand to sign the contract. So what I'm asking is, yeah, a letter, yeah, letter in hand. What we're asking council to do is to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement once we have that letter in hand and know what the commitment is from the county.
Right. So we're going to get the commitment. They'll evaluate if it's appropriate, whether they give us the full amount or something short of it. This would then allow us to sign it by January 31st.
Perfect. And still keep us in the deadline.
Correct.
On the timeline, I should say.
But let's say we don't get the money, then.
Then there's never a signed agreement that we have to worry about.
Right.
Then no issues.
Right. Any further discussion?
Clear as mud, right?
No, I understand. I had a conversation with Dan beforehand, and he explained that to me. Bobby, that was my concern too, but I feel like we're adequately protected.
All right. So I'll take a motion.
Some more.
All in favor?
Aye, second here.
Second. All right, Councilman Rodriguez, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We had a very positive conversation again today, Joe and I did, with Palm Beach County. So I'm hoping within a week or so, we'll have a letter in hand.
Go get that money, Dan.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Alright, the next is renewal of yearly agreement of monthly pest control service from Safe Home Pest Control in the amount of two hundred and seven dollars per month.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna remove myself from the dais for, uh, under new business item B, so we won't be voting.
Okay. President Procham Freebold has removed himself from the voting on this issue. Is there gonna be a motion?
Some of.
Second approval has been made, seconded by Councilman Rodriguez. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Welcome back, President.
And let the record show that the mayor, uh, that council member Freebold did abstain from both discussion and the vote on the matter.
Alright, we're on to audience comments. Any audience here live and in person want to come up and speak and share your thoughts, concerns? Come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Eighty one twenty one Pine Tree. Questions for updates on Florida Mango and the status of Pine Tree Bridge when that's gonna start. Hopefully one will be finished before the other one starts.
I've been trying for three years to get the bridge started.
But there is light at the end of the tunnel, Joe.
Dan, can you provide some insight on that, please?
Based on the agreement we have with D O T, uh, they have all of our documents. They're trying to get through those review comments now. My best guess is we'll bid it in March with construction to start probably right after the fishing camp in June.
And a lot of people have asked me when Florida Mango is gonna get reopened. You have any insight on that?
Absolutely none. They, they suggested it would be a six month construction. That's the same thing they said about Prairie. Prairie went on for twelve months.
I, I, I think it's gonna be closer to the year, start to finish, but.
Did you mention that your address was eighty one twenty one? Sure, okay, thank you. You're my neighbor, right down the street. I mean, we're all neighbors, but.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Deana Schmidt, eighteen eleven Antigua River. And I have some pictures here. I'd like to address the current status of Florida Mango between Antigua Laurel, you know, with the, with the garbage that's accumulated. I did email town and I was told that it was a county job and to communicate with them. But this is not only a safety issue, but it's a quality of life issue. And being that we're on a cul-de-sac on Antigua, we have no way to avoid this pile of garbage. So I'd like to see if we could approach the county, you know, as a community to see what they can do to please clean this up.
What the county, what the county say when you, when you contacted them?
I didn't contact.
Oh, okay.
I'd like to do it as Lake Clark Shores. I'd like to have, you know, some.
Sure. Absolutely.
Individual residents shouldn't be reaching out to the county about this. They've just neglected cutting the grass. They took the trees down and now it's like a garbage dump. So it's, it's even embarrassing to have visitors come because they need to pass that.
I will look into this with our county commissioner, Mr. Carter.
Okay.
See what can, what can be. Thank you.
Mr. Barnett.
Oh, Mr. Barnett, yeah. Gotta get used to that one.
What, is these we're taking today, ma'am?
Yeah.
Did you show these to Mr. Clark?
It doesn't look like it, it's more than just construction debris. Looks like pallets and fencing and. Yeah.
Yeah, all types of garbage and it's, you can't even walk on that path anymore.
Wow. Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Hasn't done this way.
Maybe some dumping of garbage.
That's what it looks like to me. Any other audience comments? Yes, Ms. Bing?
That looks like illegal dumping.
Yeah.
They probably just see a pile and just add on.
The lady that was just, oh, my name is Louise Bing and I am from seven four oh one West Lake Drive. And the lady that was just up mentioned something about them cutting down the trees. And I, I brought something with me tonight, just on the subject of our trees in Lake Clark Shores. And it was a letter from Florida Power and Light and this was from, um, back in May, but I wanted to read a couple of sentences from the letter about trees. Because there, it's lovely what they said. They said, Florida Power and Light appreciates the lush landscape of trees and shrubbery in our communities. They enrich the aesthetics of our neighborhood and support our environment. And they do, and it needs underlining. That's a great couple of sentences. And, uh, I, I think that coming into Lake Clark Shores and looking for property as opposed to other neighborhoods, those trees are one of the things that make us the most, one of the most desirable places to live. Because we have spent the time and allowed for the old growth trees to remain and they're beautiful. And I know that I've seen some of them cut down recently and I know that it's no fun coughing up, raking up the leaves. But we're getting shade from the trees and just the beauty of it. And, um, I am very lucky where I live because I look across at two houses with absolutely beautiful trees that look like they're over a hundred years old. And it's just so magnificent. Every time I go out my front door and I look at what I'm looking at. It makes me feel just proud to be living here because we do probably show a little more respect for those trees than most of the communities. And, um, that's all I want to say. I'm just really, I hope that we, all people thinking of cutting down these trees stop and think your neighbors are looking at them too. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come up? Anybody online while we wait?
No, sir.
Anything written in?
No, sir. Just a question mentioning that March third would be a good date for a meeting.
For the workshop.
Third, sorry, third week in March, not March third.
Any other audience comments before we move on? Alright, we're gonna move on. Thank you all very much for sharing your thoughts with us. Truly appreciate it. Gonna go to status reports. We'll start with Chief.
Paul, if you have a copy of my report, it's attached. If you have any questions, go.
Keep on writing those citations, one hundred and fifty. Need more.
Sir, Bullis, one hundred and fifteen traffic stops leading all officers. Any questions for the chief?
Chief, thank you so much. I know that the presence on Forest Hill and the intersection, the light there is very appreciated. Just at least, even if it's, uh, once a week or haphazardly, thank you, because that intersection can get pretty wild in the morning and I, I know that a lot of our residents have noticed, so thank you. I appreciate everything else.
The, I get just a little information, uh, because people ask about this all the time. The L P R cameras, so license readers, now that we have seven. We ran a hundred eighty three thousand nine hundred thirty five tags through our camera system. We came up with some stolen tags. Sex offenders that drive through town and, and we can keep track of that. So it's, it's been a great tool. And the technology is unbelievable for recording and having the database. God forbid if we have something very serious. So I want to let you know that system is working good. Also attached, you have the radar signs and it gives you the percentages and how many vehicles were doing the speed limit and over the speed limits. So you have an idea of that. The month of December, uh, we had one arrest, one narcotics arrest. A large amount of marijuana and some other, uh, for disposition and selling. That was one arrest and you got the information on that. And code enforcement, there were twenty code violations issued in the month of December.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Chief, um, I think we, we moved one of those L P R cameras, uh, that's right before Venetian. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay, so now that's perfectly in place and.
Right, I wanted, uh, it was, it was supposed to be where it is now. And I had them, uh, move it where we can get the vehicles going down Venetian. So we're, we're covered better.
Everybody's a hundred percent covered. Thank you.
Chief, real quick, I'm sorry, I don't know if this is for you or Mr. Clark, but, um, the stop sign that's right there at West Lake and Gregory, as you come around the corner. I've gotten several phone calls that there's a line of sight issue. If you could have somebody check that out, there's a, like a palmetto palm growing out. And if there is a sign there, I did go by and look at it.
Right.
There's a sign there, but the palmetto palm is obstructing the stop sign. If you just have somebody look at it and just address it, I'd be grateful.
I'll get with the manager tomorrow and, uh, uh, I'll get with maintenance and we'll see if we can go down there.
Alright, I didn't know if that was you, Dan, or the chief, but it just dawned on me when they said something, so thank you.
Any other questions?
Alright, Chief Adams, welcome. Always great to see you here.
Thank you very much. Hi, good evening, everyone. Tracy Adams, Palm Beach County Fire Rescue. It's nice to see everybody here in the new year. Happy New Year, everybody, to see everybody here healthy. I'm just recovering from the holidays, actually. We had a very busy holiday with fire rescue for sure. I'm very proud of the men and women that serve at Palm Beach County Fire Rescue. We did probably about fifteen different events throughout all the, we, um, my particular area serves five municipalities, Lake Clark Shores, Palm Springs, Haverhill, Cloud Lake and Glen Ridge. We also participated in, at Saint Mary's doing a toy drive at the oncology ward. We participated in another toy drive for Virginia Baker's daughter. And, uh, the guys and gals stepped up at one of our local indigenous schools. There was a student that wasn't going to be going on her safety patrol trip because she did not find a sponsor and within twenty four hours, the guys and gals reached in their pockets and raised twelve hundred fifty dollars for her to be able to go and she was one of three triplets and her other two sisters had already had sponsors. So I'm overwhelmingly, um, proud of, of the, the men and women that work underneath me. Their, their generosity and selflessness are, are amazing. So and those are the guys and gals that are running in your area. They, so not only do they care to serve your community and protect your community, but they even reach even further than that by community service. So I'm very, very, very proud. This was, it was a good month. And by the way, um, Chief wrote a really nice professional letter to me thanking us for the menorah lighting for participating. And the guys there took, um, some nice pictures as well. And that particular captain that you wrote about, he also participated in another toy drive at a local school and raised a bunch of money and bought a bunch of toys. So like I said, we're out there doing as much community service as we can as well. So it looks in, like in December, we ran thirty one calls in your area, twenty five medical, the rest fire alarms and vehicle accidents. Other than that, does anybody have any questions? I have a question. When's the barbecue? Do we have a date yet?
Yeah.
So I can write something out.
March twenty sixth.
March twenty sixth, okay. Cause I was just speaking to the, the lady in there. I had just got the, um, letter in the mail asking for the participation in the Christmas parade. It was dated November sixteenth and it was on my desk January sixth. Yeah, so I apologize again about that. Um, she's gonna be emailing me in the future. So once again, the gate, date was.
March twenty sixth.
March twenty sixth, okay. Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions for fire rescue?
Yes, I have a quick question. What is the month that we're supposed to check our batteries in the fire alarms in the homes?
So it would be October and then six months from October, November, December, January, February, March, April.
April, okay. I just had one of mine fall from the ceiling, so I just figured it'd be a good time to check them all.
Oh, well, you could, oh, you could definitely email me. I could send somebody over to help you.
And they, and they only last, what, ten years? Or you should check them every year?
You have to check the manufacturer's dates on them.
That's very, very good advice. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief Adams. Really appreciate all you do for, not just our community, but the surrounding areas as well. It's awesome. Alright, we're gonna go on to Mr. Scheck.
My report is included as the last two pages of your agenda package. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Scheck? No? Alright, thank you, Charlie. Mr. Clark?
I just wanted to elaborate a little bit on one of the articles in my staff report. Uh, the first item on the Senate Bill two A, the governor's change in insurance. Clearly that's, uh, driven to help business. Requiring folks to have flood insurance, I think will impact the town in a big way. The key is the special flood hazard area. The way the rules are written, if any part of your property is in the special flood hazard area, then your entire property is considered in the special flood hazard area. So since we store a lot of water in the streets, the flood maps show that that water will actually go into the yards. So while your house may not be particularly in danger, uh, you're probably gonna get tagged with having to have flood insurance. Because of the way the rule was written. So just a, a thing to be aware of. We have a lot of properties that have a little bit of their yard in the special flood hazard area. And that could end up creating a challenge for you with your flood insurance.
Is there any way for us to notify those residents? Or is it, would we just be guessing what the insurance companies are?
Right, we'd just be guessing.
They'll be finding out.
Yeah, yeah.
Even notice.
But between your insurance company coming in and telling you that you're gonna have to do it. Just a heads up.
Barrel of good news.
Alright, any questions for Mr. Clark? Alright, thank you, Dan, for all your continued hard work. Let's go on to council comments. We'll start with Councilman Gonzalez.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Um, I think we had a really, uh, great presentation by Mr. Pinsky, uh, last month and I wanted, he's not here, but I wanted to thank him and if he ever watches this video, but, um, I wanted to address, you had some very, um, poignant comments about Septic Sewer. And I think that you provide a really clear picture in terms of where we're at and where we need to go in the future and that nothing is really being done until we have good sense of where the funding is coming from. And that every, all the process up to now has just been due diligence. I did want to address all of the activities that we had during the holiday. Um, some were town sponsored, some were not. There was a boat parade, a golf cart parade, the menorah lighting, the tree lighting. You know, it really makes me proud to be part of this community. I, I actually ran into somebody the other day and she asked me where, where I live and I very proudly, of course, said Lake Clark Shores. And her very first comment, you know, right after says, oh my God, everybody wants to live there now. So, um, you know, for, for many, many years, we were a hidden, a hidden gem. Uh, now we're just a gem that everybody knows about. So, um, Ms. Bing, I wanted, you know, I, a very important thing about the trees. Uh, I love the trees and I'm, I'm very appreciative that you acknowledge that. And I think that, um, we've been recognized as a bird sanctuary for, for many, many years. So that's a wonderful thing. Obviously, be careful what you plant and where you plant it. We have a neighbor that's actually going through some plumbing issues and some drain field issues. Because of a big tree that, uh, was either planted at the wrong place or just overgrew. But, uh, it is nice to see a lot of those big mature trees. And I think that there's a project on West Lake. That's new construction. They knocked down the old house and they actually kept some of those big beautiful trees. So that was nice to see. Yeah, so thank you for sharing that and, um, looking forward to the rest of the year and all of the things that we've got going on. I know that we have Palm Beach County days, uh, coming up, uh, in March and that. And that's going to be our opportunity as a town to go up to Tallahassee and kind of advocate for some of the things that we're working on. Unfortunately, next next month, I will not be here for the meeting. I'm going to do my very best to attend virtually, but I will not be here physically. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you. Starting with Richard Pinsky, he was quoted in the paper recently. He's the president of the South Fina, South.
South Neighborhood Association.
Yes, South Neighborhood Association. And they discussed development over in that area, the eight one 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 South Dixie Highway. And they brought up our boat project in the in the article. So, you know, maybe that gets revived through some sort of commercial development venture. I want to keep that open. The other thing I wanted to say, as I went, the boat parade was amazing this year. And I went to the captain's meeting afterwards. And I had some conversations with the persons at the Hilton who really want to connect back to Lake Clark Shores again. They have under new management again. They they would like to connect to us. A couple other items. I a year ago, I'm looking at my calendar, I told you I was going to start working on our sixty-fifth anniversary book, which got nowhere. But I started getting emails. And I would really, I really need help because I think this book is this book is going to be about people, about who who the people are here. We we got a an email about a Kenneth Henry Witt, who's been here for fifty-six years. Okay, and maybe now fifty-seven years. And I've been talking to other people and you learn new things about people all the time. And we really need to memorialize them now. The Shalhubes know everybody and anybody here, so you're going to have to help a lot. Greg Freebold, you've lived here your whole life. Bobby's half your age, I'm kidding. Bobby's been here quite a bit too, but there there are some of us who have been here for a long time who can really add to this. I'll give you an example. Do you remember Christmas time, if you were to go down West Lake, there was a tree that's really lit up, a big round tree. It's really lit up and then the house next to it has like twelve Christmas trees in front. You know, I was out there one day and that tree gets lit up every year. And I'm wondering like, who does that? That's a lot of work. You always see these cranes. Well, the lady in the house next door was explaining to me that she does that for the lady in that house. The lady in that house is ninety-four, almost ninety-five. I don't know her name, but we need to figure out who she is. She's lived here for a long time. That tree was planted, that bush was planted by her husband and it's the reminder of her husband. So every year, the neighbors get together and pay for the installation of those lights. I mean, would you have ever known that but for the fact that I ran into the lady out there, a neighbor? It's those type of things that we really need to memorialize and learn. I know there's a hundred and fifty thousand of those stories. But this town is so small and such a long history. But we're also growing. I don't know if you know, but we had our first record closing of a real estate property, two point three five million dollars that just closed Sabre told me about it right over here on West Lake, the old. Boy, but he never thought, no one would have ever thought we had a two point three million dollar piece of property. So we're getting big in that respect. I was talking to Realtors and they're like, this is the town people want to be in. But it's also a small town. So I just ask you over the this year, twenty twenty-three, if everybody can come together to help me put these stories together. It's going to take forever. I'm not going to pretend like I have time to do it, but I want to do it. I want to, I want to hear the stories. Now, I'm not the greatest listener. Bob, I know you're a little better than me. Paul, you're there too. Greg's really good. Bobby is good. So you all, as council and fellow councilmen, need to help me in this project.
I'll be there, I'll be sure to help you.
Because I think by the end of twenty twenty-three, we'll be able to put something out that really is a testament to the character of the people in this town, who they are, why they care about each other, why they do selfless things. Four Brothers Pizza, I'm over there talking to the guy in there and he like has lived here his entire life. One of the guys in there, he tells me these stories of back, you know, when he was like, I mean, early eighties, what it was like to live here. And that's the guy that works at the pizzeria. So it's just, it's those type of stories. So I want to, I want us to make our town be a town. And I want for their sixty-fifth anniversary, which is now passed, to do that. So that's my commitment on my end to do it. I also want to commend all the town staff for the hard work during the holidays, for all the events that we had. People are really proud to be a part of our town. I'm proud to be here twenty-five years this year, I mean, this past December. And it was kind of bittersweet because someone who lived there thirty years in front of me just moved out, sold their house. Now, of course, they sold their house for a lot of money. And irony is they sold their house and now they have a nice retirement. And it's kind of interesting how people come and go in our town and how it works. But I I just want, we started our meeting off with one of the most amazing prayers I think I've heard in a long time. And at first it seemed long until I started like listening to what what pastor had to say. And what did he talk about? He talked about love. That was his theme in that prayer. And I'm hoping that by putting these things together with about who we have that live here now, we will come to better appreciate and love our neighbors. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Clark, I'm just going to add to something that Councilman Rodriguez said. Blue Way Trail has been taken over by the county, correct? Nope, so refresh our memory on what's going on with that.
So let's be specific when we're talking about components. Blue Way Trail as an entity is a state-recognized trail that runs from Palm Beach County to Broward County, from Martin County to Broward County. Part of that runs through the lake, through the chain of lakes, down to Lake Idah. Palm Beach County has indicated that they are budgeting to take that over next budget year. They have not done it yet. Then we have the boat lift and the portage facilities at the structure. And that's still Blue Way Trail Inc.'s charge and responsibility is trying to get that to move forward. Pinsky, as president of Blue Way Trail Inc., has been working closely with our good friends at Flagler Realty, who have the eighty-one eleven project, to help them work components of that project into their project.
Still alive.
Moving just as slow as it ever has.
The first official meeting was in July of twenty thirteen when I was mayor back then. Yeah, I still have my notes, ten years. You know what, we're not giving up.
Heck, no. We're going to make it happen.
It'll happen. Small, steady steps, correct?
Correct.
You hear that, Mr. Lubello? Small, steady steps. We have a lot of work coming in front of us within the next three or four months. We will be going to Tallahassee several times. There's been a bunch of different things we heard. Dan, I called you the other day and we talked about specifics. And I don't remember if you remember at the League of Cities, but we ran into Dana White. And she told us that there was an announcement coming on the sixth of January. So I very carefully watched and watched and watched and I received that news. I've got to be honest with you, I was pretty surprised. But I guess it is what it is in this atmosphere, right? So we'll continue to work here. We'll see where things go. Don and Rhonda, congratulations. Now let's get to work. We've been waiting for months and months and months. Murphy's like, when is this going to happen? They just got their approval for their seawall. They've been very patient and they'll make everything nice as they always do. And I do want to say thank you to the staff throughout the holiday season. Everybody on this staff around here works tirelessly. They really do. A lot of it's volunteer by them. They come in there, they do a marvelous job. As you drive through Lake Clark Shores, the head of the lake is spectacular. And it's pretty much due to them. And they are very good at making sure everything is organized and in good order. From the tree lighting to the parade, to the menorah lighting, to, you know, all of the other things. There was eighty-four golf carts or eighty-three or some crazy number like that in that golf cart parade. Can you believe that? I was down at the head of the lake in my boat watching, I was like, when will this end? It was just so many of it was spectacular. So Happy New Year, everyone. Twenty twenty-three is going to be a very exciting year. We have a lot of stuff coming our way. See you next meeting.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, may I? Since Mr. Freebold brought up the golf cart parade, not in association with golf cart parade, but separately, someone ran their golf cart into our fence in the back of the property here and bent the pole over pretty significantly. So we'd like to know who that was. There has to be significant damage to that golf cart. And we heard there were six young people in it at the time that it got smacked. So if anybody knows, can tell us whose golf cart that is, we'd appreciate knowing.
That would be great. If anybody has any information, please contact the police or the town and help us get to the bottom of that issue. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Sounds like a job for the detective department of our police department.
I too want to thank the staff for all that they do during not only December, but throughout the entire year. But I'll tell you what, we just seem to shine when it comes to December. To answer y'all's question and give you an update, I wanted you to make sure you understood what Mr. Clark was talking about regarding flood insurance. There was a, there was a bill filed, Senate Bill two A, addressing insurance reform. The bill requires any residential policyholders who have their homeowner's insurance through citizens to also purchase flood insurance. I canceled my flood insurance two years ago because I had a pretty good idea that my house and I got a flood, my property. I'm elevated. You got to come up eight feet. And I also have citizens last year. It's over a thousand dollars, close to fifteen hundred. I remember when flood insurance was, you know, cost you about the amount of money you had in your pocket. But not anymore. Mr. Pinsky did a great job, Bobby, in explaining everything. And Mr. Pinsky's been on board with us for many years. And I refer to Mr. Pinsky as my my handler when we go to Tallahassee because he's just, he's remarkable. And he tells us where to go and who to talk to and coordinates a lot of those meetings. And his efforts are invaluable. I want you to know that there was a blurb on the residence page and I talked to Dan about it this morning. A lot of people think that the town is irresponsible in allowing such a large home to be built on Beta Circle or Beta Court. I kind of chuckle because evidently they think that, you know, we don't monitor these things. How can the town allow such a big home to be built on such a small lot? Well, it's all goes through the building department and it's all approved and inspections go through. And I was informed, the height is thirty feet from the finished floor. Thirty feet from the finished floor. Just want everybody to know that. Might look out of place, but it is in compliance, correct, Mr. Clark?
Yes, sir.
And the barbecue is going to be the end of the weekend, last weekend in March. Ms. Adams, so look forward to your support again. And I'm going to, I'm not going to take everybody else's thunder. I'll leave the food truck to the mayor, but everybody else took my thunder. So I tell you what, sometimes being last is not a good thing. But thank you for everybody and may, may twenty twenty-three bring everybody greater opportunities, peace and happiness, but most importantly, good health. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I want to thank everybody again for attending both in person and virtually and wish everybody Happy New Year. Please mark your calendar, some events coming up. There will be a February seventh candidate's forum, followed by the regular town council meeting on February seventh. So the timing of that's a little different than normal. And then again, February twenty-eighth is the next town council meeting after that. And in between those dates, you have February eleventh, the Valentine's Day Sweetheart Food Truck Event. So everybody seemed to really love the food truck event back in October. And we were able to bring it back here for Valentine's Day or just before that in February. And then movie night on March twenty-fourth. So we'd love to see as many residents as we possibly can, plus your family and friends to join us for all these events. So please mark your calendar so you can plan accordingly. Want to wish a very happy birthday, third birthday to my son who turned three today. And thank you all again. I'll take a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Have a good evening, everybody.